The two girls with Mary's, don't break me down.
Waters?
Here.
Capron?
Hi.
Say hi.
Hi. Breckin?
Here.
Hi.
Hi.
Moore?
Hi. I move we adjourn closed session.
Second.
Capron?
Aye.
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Waters?
Ready to proceed?
Yep.
Want me to break anything?
Nope. Do you?
Not yet. Call the roll, please. Let me see who's here.
Breckin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Scott? Waters?
Here.
Capron?
Here.
We'll have a moment of silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag, please. Ben?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, we have an interview for the museum board of trustees, Mr. Lear. Good afternoon. Would you like to come to the...
I'm up later?
Yes, please. Want to get to know you. We already know you, but we want to get to know you. Good afternoon.
How are you? Good.
Tell us a little something about your interest in the museum board.
Well, I recently retired, as you know. I was a UNISUR director, which is another name, 27 years. And prior to that, I taught history and English first in Alden, Iowa, and then in Cherokee. And I've been fascinated by the museum, to see how it's grown and how it's progressed over the years. And I'd like to be a part of that. I think that any city of any size needs someplace to protect the culture, protect the history, because if we don't learn from it, as we're seeing politically, we're condemned to repeat it.
Well, thanks for making the application. I think you'd be an excellent trustee.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also do. How many do we have?
Just the one opening.
Just one opening?
Yes.
Is it gender-based?
No, this one is not.
Okay. Okay, awesome.
Any questions for Mr. Lear?
No, not at all. Thank you for applying.
Thanks for applying.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Yep, appreciate it.
Okay, item three, Mayor's Youth Commission presentation, "Truth Initiative."
Welcome, girls.
Hi, my name is Carly Gassaway, and I'm the mayor of Mayor's Youth Commission. And this is Grace Hope, and she's the mayor pro tem of Mayor's Youth Commission. And last week, Grace and I had the opportunity to travel to Washington, DC, to talk to Senator Jenny Ernst and Representative Steve King about smoking within movies and how the smoking correlates to the amount of youth smoking.
While we were on our trip, we talked to our senators and representatives on how Iowa can become more smoke-free. We asked Senator Ernst to sign a letter saying that all movies and smoking should be rated R.
Some other things we got to experience on our trip was a tour of DC and the Truth Initiative offices. Truth Initiative came out of the master settlement deal in 1999, and its goal is to educate the population of tobacco risk and how to stop youth from smoking. And this is a video Truth Initiative made to educate people.
Is it unmuted there at that computer?
Uh, no, there's some.
There we go.
I need a cigarette.
Can I get one of those?
Give me one of those, will you?
Dentists recommend them. Makes your food taste even better.
Remind her not to smoke it.
Don't drink, darling. You just have to hold it.
So, as you can see, the movies are creating a renormalizations of smoking. This is why the grant was given to the Sulan District Health from Truth Initiative to allow Mayor's Youth Commission to do some projects here in Sulan that affect our community locally. This past month, we created an event for students to come to. We showed the movie Moana and handed out bags of popcorn that had information about this Reinvent the Real project that we've been doing. We don't know how many people exactly came, but there were over 100 bags of popcorn that were passed out.
Overall, we both had a very good time on our trip to DC. We didn't just learn about it like our elected government officials do, and we can use these skills when leading more Mayor's Youth Commission meetings. We look forward to our future without smoking in Iowa. Thank you.
No doubt.
Do you guys have any...
Presentation, any questions, comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. First of all, thank you for coming and showing us this video. You never think about it until you see something like this. You know, when I watch TV, I'm not paying attention to the smoking or anything. You know, you're just watching the movie, right? It's huge to get this out early, because I think kids need to see this and need to understand what the repercussions of it would be. So, kudos to you, you mayor and mayor pro tem for doing that. I know that I have visited with you, I think, I believe it was last Monday, with awards for the Mayor's Youth Commission. And we just started talking about it, and I said, this is something that we need to bring to council. It means that you were the mayor and mayor pro tem. This just fit in great. So, I thank you guys for coming. I really appreciate it, and I'm sure that everybody else up here also does. So, good job and keep up the good work.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Amazing what the Mayor's Youth Commission comes up with.
It is.
Week after week, I mean, it really is incredibly good.
It's very important.
And you know, some of those, the videos, some of it, I thought, well, some of it looked glamorous and really appealing to smoke, but then you'd see some of those other pictures, and you'd think, who would ever want to pick up a cigarette? But 79% of the shows...
Yep.
And you said 15 to 22-year-olds?
Yeah.
Pick up on that.
Yeah.
It's a huge problem, so thank you for bringing it to everyone's attention. Great job.
Keep up the good fight.
Yeah, and don't give up on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Our consent agenda consists of items four through 14A. Items passed unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is requested by a council member. Any person wishing to speak on an agenda item may come to the podium at the time the item is being discussed. The other council members will help me recognize you. That was a joke.
Say what?
It helped me last week a lot, so I'm counting on you to help me this week.
You'll be fine.
Any person wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at the end of the regular meeting during citizen concerns. Please fill out a citizen concern card found outside the chamber's entrance and give it to the city manager, Robert Padmore, who's on my far left, your right. All speakers shall state their name and address for the record and then provide their statement. I will move the consent agenda.
Second.
Item four, reading of the city council minutes of May 14, 2018. Item five, resolution temporarily closing various streets in the downtown area June 2nd and June 3rd for the Firehouse Bars Gay Pride Event. Item six, actions relating to grants. A is resolution authorizing the Community Development Department to submit a grant application to the Federal Home Loan Bank for housing rehabilitation program funding. Six B, resolution authorizing a request for release of funds and certification of environmental review for the Community Development Block Grant Program. Item seven, actions adopting construction documents. Seven A, Convention Center. One, resolution adopting plans and specs for the Convention Center parking deck project. And item seven A two, resolution adopting plans and specs for the Convention Center renovation project. Item eight, actions relating to agreements and contracts. A, resolution approving amendment number one to the service provider agreement with certified testing services for the Pier Street Reconstruction Project. B, resolution approving a consulting services agreement with DGR Engineering for the Pier Street Reconstruction Project. C, resolution approving the contract and performance bond with Steve Harris Construction for the Bridgeport West Improvements Harbor Drive Realignment Project. D, resolution approving a service provider agreement with downrange construction for the Underground Utilities Field Services Facility. I have a question on eight D. Mr. Mock, can you tell us just what monies are being spent for the existing facility and what monies might be spent on the new facility that we're looking at?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Rick Mock, Special Assistant to the City Manager. I laid a spreadsheet out in front of all of you earlier today. I broke down the cost of the facility, and I put it in chronological order. As you're aware, the Public Works Director, the Utilities Director, the Finance Director, Stan LaFave and myself were set up on a committee to work on this project and had been meeting regularly. In November, we started the process of looking at preliminary design for new facility and locations for that site, and we did present that information to council. And we're proceeding down the road of trying to get us relocated, the utility staff, into a different city facility while we went through that process. But as council is aware, the union representatives came forward and were concerned that they wanted to stay in their own facility, protect their equipment. They didn't think their building was that bad. And after investigation, and we did do on the facility with the structural engineer, that was reaffirmed by that structural engineer that with the little modifications to the existing facility, it was safe to inhabit. And so, the spreadsheet shows you that, to date, we have spent just under $9,000 on the existing facility, and that is mostly two structural engineering studies and then saw borings in that northeast corner where the beam is bending. And to date, we have spent about $53,000 on work to move us to a new facility. We have identified land, as we presented last time to council, and that land that we did identify, we're working with the Corps through the Public Works Department to try to get approval to utilize that land for a new complex that would work well for us. We've been in communication with some of the existing landlords in the immediate area, and they're receptive to working with the city as well. So, we think it's a great site. It's just we have to clear that hurdle with the Corps, and as soon as that happens, we will be able to move forward with the design of it. What we're asking council to approve today, $42,000 approximately to downrange, would stabilize that northeast corner of the building where the beam was bending and should keep that facility in good repair while we look for and put the funding in place and acquire the land to build a new facility. But if council chooses not to get into that, we would be happy to go back to the plan of relocating the utilities department. I visited with Public Works Director today, and the plan that we originally had in place would still be workable, and we could make that happen, and we could get their equipment for utilities into other city facility buildings. Some would have to stay outside, but we could make that happen as well.
So, we're continuing down the path of a new facility?
Yes, sir. Always have been.
Okay. And this is really a safety issue, is that what you're telling me?
This is to stabilize that corner so there's no further deterioration of that facility. What they're going to do is put some heely anchors in on both sides of that northeast corner to stabilize it, to keep it from deteriorating further. The facility was originally built on wood piling, and for whatever reason, in that back corner of the building, the pile were only driven into the garbage. They weren't driven through the garbage. They must have got rejection, whatever. And so, as the garbage has deteriorated and settled, there became voids under those pier. The proposal now is to core these anchors in. They essentially are basically screwed into the ground, and we're going to dub it 57 feet, which is underneath the garbage that we had identified when we did that void.
Okay, thank you, Rick.
Is the installation of the stabilization system, is that guaranteed for a certain period of time? Is it... If we move forward with a new building, I mean, we're talking, what, three to five years out?
Year and a half to two years, maybe even longer, because...
How many, did you say?
Year and a half to two.
Year and a half to two? Will somebody check it?
Before we can start. Yes, we have a contract in place with a structural engineer. That is one of the identified contracts in that spreadsheet provided for you under case engineering, that they do observation. We have them under contract to come through periodically at set times to verify the elevation, make sure nothing is changing.
Okay, thank you.
Rick, one thing you were talking about was, we do have it in place. We could move this equipment too, and just in case, or in the time being until the new facility is in place, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Is that opportunity if we don't go down this road with the 42?
That is correct. The employees could be relocated to the central maintenance garage facility, and the equipment could be moved into the building that formerly housed the garbage collection trucks.
And can you expand upon...
Well, I think that they have all of their equipment in the existing facility. They have all of their trucks in assigned stalls where they're comfortable with that. Essentially, the building is safe, based on the reports we have seen from the soils engineer, from the structural engineer, and I think they...
We're saying the facility is safe. The structural engineer is saying that it's safe.
For the interim. It's not going to last forever, slowly deteriorating. And over time, it is going to continue to slowly deteriorate. We have a second beam now that is starting to bend. And that's why we'd like to get the stabilization in place to hold that corner and support...
But if we don't do the stabilization and hold that in place, you're saying structurally it's sound, at least in this interim period?
Right, for a short period of time. It's been identified that it is slowing...
Because I agree with you, safety is incredibly important. I want them to be working in a safe environment. I've toured the facility, went down and looked at it. But I want to make sure that we're not spending money that's unnecessary, whether we move the equipment or if the structural engineer is saying that it's sound and safe, and we're looking at relocating in a year and a half, two years, even three.
Well, both the soils engineer and the structural engineer are supportive of doing this stabilization project.
And Councilmember Waters, I'd say a year and a half to two years is very optimistic, just from a funding standpoint. Because I think, Donnie, you could address what with our capacities and what we can bond for, as well as our ability to pay for it. We're, I think, one and a half to two years is pretty optimistic.
Right. We are subject to a million dollars per, like, general contract, so we've got to kind of break this up and do it in pieces. And because we have to comply with design specs, we have to have a paved parking lot, we have to have facade on the front of the building. So, that's all just added cost to the project, which we had anticipated at a million dollars. So, we've got to be very creative in how we fund this. So, we've got hurdles there that we're going to have to go and solve.
I think this is money well spent even for a short-term fix.
Even if there's a secondary facility we could move in for the time being?
We talked about this in our meeting, and the staff truly felt they were more efficient in their current building. When you start splitting them up, then you've got time to go get the equipment. They just felt if we could make their building solid, they would be content to stay where they are. And we felt this was well worth the investment.
On an interim basis, so...
Right.
I just don't want to be criticized for putting money into a facility that we're going to eventually do away with, when we could use that money in the new facility, or toward the new facility.
Well, and how do you quantify the travel time? I totally understand that it would be a lot easier having everything right there in that facility and having the comfort of that. I totally understand that, but to the tune of $43,000?
Yeah, and we were just referring to what the employees that work in the building said, but we did have an alternative... We were ready in January to move them. We had done inventory. We had already picked out spots to put equipment. So, it truly is up to council how you want to do this.
This is truly a council decision on how they'd like to do it.
Well, it seems to me that, I think that we should stick with this right here, because it gives us an extra two years at least to go from one project to the next. So, I don't know. It doesn't make sense to me to split it up, unless I'm looking at it wrong.
Anyone else?
I'm fine with it. I think the efficiency is the big key for me. And if we can keep the department operating at an efficient level while we put the rest of the plan together, I think it's the right thing to do. And I wish we didn't have to spend it either, but that building has gotten its use, and now it's time to move on. But in the interim, we need to make it as safe as we possibly can, and...
And I totally agree. I should be clear, or maybe I'm not. I totally agree. I want it to be safe. I want us to be efficient. But putting $43,000 into a building that we're hoping just to move out of... I mean, we talked about this with the fuel, with the fuel station. I mean, I was hesitant to want to do that. We want to relocate that as well. And now, talking to employees, I would tell them, I would, please, bear with us in this interim period while we try to build you a brand-new facility at a different location. We apologize that it's going to be a little uncomfortable and a little uneasy, you know, traveling in between in this interim period, but it's not worth putting $43,000 more dollars into a building that's sinking, I guess. That's just where I'm at, and that's fine. It sounds like there's support. I'm okay with that.
This truly is council's call on this.
Okay. I would just like to pull a separate vote, please.
Okay. Have we looked at the... Rick, have we looked at the cost of doing the other interim, moving it elsewhere? Have we looked at that cost?
That cost would be minimal. There is room at the central maintenance garage to relocate the employees, and the garbage truck garage has been vacated, so we can move some of the equipment. We will not be able to get all of the utility equipment indoors, but they do have some key piece of equipment that are weather-sensitive, and those we would have to, those that have water in them, the camel trucks and stuff.
And everyone realizes we're headed toward a new facility, though, correct? All the employees do?
We have been communicating that through their department heads at those meetings we've had, as well as the memos we've sent to council. We've tried to keep you informed, as well as we've gone through this process.
Okay.
So, we certainly hope that they're sharing that information with their employees.
Okay, thank you.
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
No.
Waters?
No.
Capron?
Aye.
So, it fails to pass.
We defer it until the week that...
It automatically defers it to the next meeting.
Start a June meeting?
June 1st?
June 4th. Where'd Rick go? Rick, can you... This is going to be deferred till June 4th. Could you get council just a summary of what that's going to look like to move... Yeah, to relocate everyone? If we've had it before, I'm sorry, I'm just not being able to pull it out of my memory.
Absolutely, we can get that memo to council.
I appreciate that.
All right.
Thanks, Rick.
I should have asked if anyone else was to be heard on that item. Was there anybody? Do you have any comments or anything on it? Item nine, actions authorizing the issuance of checks. A, resolution approving change order number one and authorizing final payment to the Grundmann Hicks for the Half Moon Booster Station Facility Improvements Project. B, resolution approving change order number one and authorizing final payment to SubSurfCo for Country Club Golf Course Storm Sewer Project. C, resolution authorizing final payment to Structural Concrete for the 2017 Bridge Repairs Project. Item 10, actions relating to property. Staff has requested a motion to delete item 10A, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. Item 10B, staff has requested that we delete this item. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Capron?
Aye.
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Item 10C, staff has requested that we make, that we delete this item. I'll make that motion.
Second. Sorry.
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 11, purchasing A, resolution awarding a purchase order to Jensen Motors for the purchase of one 2018 Dodge Ram 2500 four-wheel-drive pickup with utility body and crane. P, Horizon Technology, one, resolution awarding a purchase order to Horizon Technology for two automated grease extraction systems for the wastewater treatment plant. And three, resolution awarding a purchase order to Horizon Technology grease extraction system for testing kits for the wastewater treatment plant. Item 12, applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine, beer permits.
Can we go back to 11A?
Absolutely.
The purchase of the truck. I know Jensen was the low, but a Sioux City business was within 1%.
It was only $600. I...
And it is. There is a code that allows us to pick the Sioux City business first if it's less than 2%. Is there...
I was going to say, I... That's what it's...
Okay.
But, yes, you have that ability.
Well, and they define part of it as, uh... Local selected bidder shall be defined as having been determined to be within the corporate limits of the city, physical and economic relationship, and that's what I was looking at, but Jensen does have...
Dealerships in Sioux City.
Dealerships in Sioux City, I guess.
That's why I... Because I read that same thing, Pete. I was along that same line, and then I was thinking, well, all the business that Jensen does in the area and has dealerships in Sioux City, that's why.
Okay.
That was Darobolak Acting Fleet, answer. The... We did ask legal for an interpretation of that section before making the decision to move forward, because that was a concern. And once we've read that section of the code, that was why we determined to go with this to Jensen.
Even though they don't sell that particular product here?
Because they do business and they lead to the...
Yep, I'm fine with it. Otherwise, I wanted to support the... And I guess they are local. I didn't realize that.
We have one for Sioux City for it on the next council meeting, so...
Okay.
Thanks, Darrell.
Perfect. Thank you.
Item 13, applications for beer liquor license. See the list and come forward if you have any questions. And item 14, receipt of minutes. See the list and come forward if you have any questions. Is there anyone to be heard on items four through 14A of our consent agenda? Okay, ready to vote?
Excuse me. Electronic panels, please.
Here's light up. Consent agenda passes four to zero. Recommendations of planning and zoning, item 15. Hearing and ordinance rezoning 205 Pearl Street, petition of City of Sioux City. Plan and zoning recommends approval. Good afternoon, Susan.
Hello, Susan Stewart, Chair, Planning and Zoning Commission. We considered both 15 and 16 together.
15 and the, and 16 together. That's one's a rezoning, one's a site plan. These are for the parking garage that is going to be to the south of the Hard Rock Casino. We had a number of questions. We ultimately voted unanimously to approve both items. We had a number of questions with two conditions, one condition being landscaping, the other condition being enclosing the stairwells of the parking enclosure. We had a number of questions ranging all the way from whether the railroad tracks behind the garage to the south of the garage are ADA accessible, to whether, what the footing, how far the footings are going to be, the city and Hard Rock's role in this, whether there's going to be a parking study required, and about the corrugated metal, whether there was going to be a charge to park in the, in the parking garage, just a whole variety of questions. I think the Hard Rock was, answered the questions very well. They did say that they did have some concerns about the enclosed stairwell due to budget constraints, but we got good answers and we approved it, both items unanimously.
The only question I had, Susan, was thinking about driving east right there on that road. Are you going to be able to see the stoplight? That was the only thing I was thinking about was, and I know some concern came up with lighting and what we might have to do, but that was just a concern. I was thinking about when you're driving east on what...
Planner, there was some discussion on that. There will be some traffic signals on Third Street as you're going east that would flash, and whether those are on the structure themselves or on the street level. I don't know if that's been determined yet, but there will be some signals that would flash if the light is red or turning red.
Red, yeah.
Correct. Yeah, because that sight of that light will be blocked.
Yeah, and that's been done before, right? We're comfortable with, staff's okay with that?
Correct.
Yeah, there's a, going to be a warning sign on the street, and it is a, it's a exit road or a, it's some kind of a, it's a, DOT is interested in this road as well because it is a detour route. Is that correct, Chris? Correct.
Okay. And where does it exit out into? The existing...
Into the existing parking lot.
Parking lot and that exit that's just west on Third, right?
Yes.
Correct. There'd be no additional curb cuts onto any streets. It would essentially utilize the existing parking lot. That curb cut would be widened a little bit onto Third Street, but there'd be no additional.
Great. Thank you.
I need a motion.
Oh, yeah.
I have to abstain. I have a conflict of interest.
And we are asking that the conditions still be in place regarding showing the landscaping plan and enclosing the stairwells.
Yeah, we did approve it with those conditions.
I noticed you also talked just a little bit about design materials, and then when you went into executive session, you said you had a discussion on decorative materials. Is there an issue there or...
Um, we had a couple of, I guess, I had some questions about corrugated metal, but, you know, really, this is a unique zone, so the regular standards don't apply. We had some discussion about the fact, this is going to be a pretty plain vanilla parking ramp, and when you can tear, compare it to, is it the hair, the one by the convention center with the, with the pretty columns in it?
Yes.
There was some question about whether this one needs to be, um, pretty, but I think we were satisfied that this looks, it's not that dissimilar from the existing Hard Rock or from the Stony Creek across, and it doesn't need to be as pretty as those ones were.
Well, we still want it to be pretty. Come on, Jim, we can't make it pretty back there.
I, I call it pretty. I don't believe it was called pretty.
Well, another thing, I think I've seen in other communities, maybe I'm wrong, is the corrugated metal, the panel or something, you can do designs on that or maybe a Hard Rock logo on that or something.
The corrugated metal is actually going to be perforated. It's only going to be located over Third Street. The intent is so someone couldn't throw any items down to the right of way.
Yeah. No, I understand that, but you can still have a logo or something painted on there.
True.
That's what I've seen anyway, but maybe not in this example. Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone to be heard on item 15? Okay, ready to vote? Whoops. Oh, shoot. I don't know if mine got entered or not. I have to hit abstain.
It did.
The yes did. Abstain.
Your abstention is registered?
Oh, there it is. Okay, three, zero, one. Mr. Moore abstains. Any objections to waiving the statutory rule?
Nope.
Give you a motion for that?
Moved.
Second.
Moore?
Abstain.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Motion second for, second and third readings?
I'll make that motion.
Nicole.
Second.
I just could never quite get in there.
You need a, you need four votes to waive the statutory rule.
Oh.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Thanks, Chris.
Get in the heat of Mayor Pro Tem. Here we go.
Fought pretty well today.
Okay, so we had our first reading.
Correct. Only a first reading.
I know they wouldn't get...
Come back on June 4th.
Hmm. And, uh, hang on a minute. Can the mayor call in? He said he could call in if he's...
If he's incapacitated due to injury or illness, he's able to participate by phone.
Good. He said he was listening, so.
Will.
He have to be in.
I think from the beginning of the meeting, however.
Well, it has to be from the beginning, not just on anyone either.
I think they, they don't, a lot of them...
There's nothing specific that says that in the rules, but for the confusion, that's a council's choice, I guess, but...
I don't want us to, however, I do know that we want to get moving on that project. I don't want it to wait additional weeks.
Well, it'll be two weeks for sure, because we don't have council next week.
Yeah, it'll be June 4th, yeah.
But you're talking three weeks.
But there are other options procedurally available to us, so we probably should pursue those. I think you're...
I'm, I'm sorry.
I think you might be right about that. You probably need to be there to call in for the entire meeting.
There's something in there that says they can.
It is.
You may be able to vote on that.
Did the mayor text you?
Mayor Pro Tem, Moore.
I'll text him now and just see if he's available. Mayor, if you're listening.
Yeah, bona fere.
Yeah. Exactly.
Yeah, I, I'm just gonna put it, can you call in if it's legal? I'm not sure what it is.
Okay, so...
He said he was listening to that's before.
Rules are silent as to whether or not there's a prohibition if Mayor Pro Tem Moore would vote on the waiver of the rules. That appears to be permissible if that's something that you would choose to do, even though you're stating a conflict of interest.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's, um, I mean, the other avenue procedurally, we can go is to call for a special meeting if we needed to. And I'll leave that up to the mayor and the three of you, and I really need to bow out of it.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking, anyway. Good.
Okay.
Item 16, hearing and ordinance adopting a site plan.
But, we're all then voting then on this one, right?
Yeah, the first one was passed, three, zero, one.
All right, because I see our light is on up here, so that's why I was asking.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That's the first thing.
You recorded that first one.
In provision that these rules not governed by the code may be temporarily suspended by a, by a vote of majority. Is that in Iowa code, the four?
I think the first thing we need to do is just clarify if there is an urgent need.
And I'm not sure there is, given that plans and specs still have to be drafted. Yeah. I don't think there's any urgency.
I agree.
Other than...
I was just trying to get them going, yeah. That's fine. I'm fine with it.
Well, you would know, because you've had...
Yeah, there's, I don't think there's urgency, other than we just want to get things done and get them moving forward, so.
Okay.
Good.
Are you, are you set to go on item 16 now?
Yes.
Okay, item 16, hearing and ordinance adopting a site plan for 205 Pearl Street and a portion of 111 Third Street, petitioner SCE Partners. Plan and zoning recommends approval of this item with conditions.
We, we had one, oops.
Sorry.
Uh, we discussed both 15 and 16 together, so the comments are pretty much, and concerns were the same for both items.
Susan, appreciate that. Anyone to be heard on item 16?
[laughing]
Okay, ready for the vote for the first reading?
Yes.
You can use your electronic panel.
Oh, that's right, we can do the electronic.
Abstain.
This would be the item we would ask if the council would continue those conditions?
Means you to abstain.
Yeah, this is the, yeah, that's a good point.
Your council wishes to continue those two conditions that the planning and zoning commission put on their motion.
The rezoning is unconditional. The site plan is.
Regarding the providing landscaping...
You would make a motion to continue with it?
Correct.
Oh, before we vote?
It would be part of the motion.
But they accept our recommendations.
Or are we voting to accept?
Already been moved in second, so you would have to revise.
You want to do an amendment to the motion if we're going to add the conditions?
If you wish to add those two conditions.
Aren't they accepting our recommendations?
I was gonna say, I thought we were voting to accept the recommendations, though, that would include those. No?
The way that the item is stated is that it is including, that planning and zoning recommends approval with conditions in the item. That's how that it's stated.
So we should be okay?
Okay.
Sounds good. And I would move the statutory rule, but we wouldn't get there, so moving on.
And I restarted the vote at Mayor Pro Tem's request.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. So we're voting on item 16 for the first reading, okay?
Correct.
And it includes the conditions, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Uh, the item passes three, zero, one with Mr. Moore abstaining. Okay, you here for the next item, Susan, or are you done?
I'm done.
Okay.
I'm your mayor.
I don't know what that would be like, I guess, but that's okay. Hearings, item 17, hearing and resolution approving proposal to sell property and authorizing a city deed property at 2714 Vine Avenue, petitioner Daniel and Karina Walsh. I'll move the item.
Second.
Anyone to be heard on, for zero, item 18, hearing and resolution amending the budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018. I move that item.
Second.
Anyone to be heard on item 18? Item 18 passes four, zero. Item 19, hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of the Sioux Land Expo Center for the lease of land in the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area and directing the city manager to negotiate development, lease, management, fiscal agent, and parking agreements. Property in the 700 block of South Lafayette Street. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Anyone to be heard on item 19? Item 19 passes on a four, zero vote. Item 20, hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Sioux City brick and tile for land in the combined Central Sea City CBD Urban Renewal Area and directing the city manager to negotiate development and minimum assessment agreements. Property of 200 and 222 Floyd Boulevard. This item was deferred from May 7, 2018. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay. Anyone to be heard on this item? We got everything all in order? Is it, that's what we were doing from May 7th, correct?
Uh, there are still some final terms that are being negotiated as far as language, so this is giving authorization to the city manager to negotiate those final terms, and the agreement will come back for approval by the council.
Okay.
In its final form.
All right, thank you, Nicole. Item 20 passes four, zero. Discussion items, item 21, resolution formally removing all demolition orders for 525 Sixth Street, the Warrior Hotel. Is there a motion?
Mayor and council, we may have a brief amendment to this as it's currently proposed. There is some outstanding litigation regarding the Warrior Hotel and an appeal from the demolition order that was placed on the property going back. The last item in the court records is from 2003. I spoke with Roger Codran briefly at the beginning of the meeting, and that may also be something that the council wishes to include in this action. The way that it's proposed is that it's a resolution formally releasing and removing the demolition order. However, there is the outstanding litigation, so the council may want to consider a mutual dismissal of that litigation to clean up the property as far as the title issues and anything else that's outstanding. I don't know if Roger cares to comment or give authorization related to that. I kind of sprung it on him right before the meeting as another potential issue we may want to talk about, so.
Thank you, Nicole. Roger Codran, 4921 Singing Hills Boulevard, speaking on behalf of Warrior Hotel Limited Partnership. And yes, I was not aware, and it didn't come up in our title search, the litigation aspects went back to 2003. What we're trying to do is to clean up title situations, and of course, for some strange reason, our, our financing partners have a little bit of a concern about having an open demolition order from the city on the property that they're trying to finance. And so we're just pretty much cleaning up all of the title, all the title objections at this point in time. So if you can include that, yes, I think we should include that as need be, so we can get this all wrapped up in one fell swoop.
So what, you say outstanding litigation from 2003?
Sure. When the demolition order was put on, it, it, there's quite the history. A couple different times the demolition order came on. More specifically, in November 24th of 1998, a petition was filed for writ of certiorari from the council action placing the demolition order on the property. Litigation continued forward. There were several different versions of settlement agreements that were reached. The last one that was found regarding terms and conditions to stay the demolition order that was currently on the property. So that has been outstanding. No additional entries in the court record. It's just kind of been hanging out there in place.
Well, what were the conditions to stay the...
I would have to...
I mean, is that, is that, is that something we need to consider?
There were, if you remember, the development agreement requirements came to the council to have that removed, the existing development agreement, which all of this was tied together. They had to stabilize the property. I believe there were pieces of glass and maybe terracotta, different things that were falling off of the structure. There was also asbestos remediation and other things that were in the building that needed to be stabilized, and those were the things that the council had considered at the time, from, from what I've been told, because it's been a while back, but that is my understanding. And I don't know if Bob can offer additional detail. Okay.
My hair was a lot darker back then.
[laughing] Hmm. So we need an amendment?
And this is...
I was gonna say, make a motion.
Sure, and for clarification, this is not removing the red tag that's on the property. This is removing the demolition order that was ordered by the council on the property. So all things considered, it looks like the project is proceeding forward and will be the rehab and remodel of, of the building. If for some reason that would not take place, the tag is still placed on the property and the council could reorder a demolition order at a future date.
Okay.
Darrell, do you have any issues with that or questions?
No, no, this has been ongoing, this, three DBs before me, so, quite a while back. But a lot of the, of the major issues that were very, shall I say, front and foremost with the, with, like was mentioned, the loose terracotta pieces and things like this, those have been stabilized so that we're not having those kind of issues right now, so I feel very comfortable with this, yes.
Good. So yes, I would make the motion with the inclusion of...
Yes, and I can provide the case number for the record. It's LA CV 117842.
You're making a motion to amend.
I would make a motion to amend.
Second.
Abstain, conflict of interest.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
We'll vote on the main motion as amended.
I'll move it.
Second.
Yeah, it's been...
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought it was moved, I'm sorry.
Were you doing that electronically?
I did not have a motion or second. Did you on the main motion?
Yes, Councilman Waters and Councilperson Capron.
Okay, there we go.
My main motion.
Abstain.
Oh, gosh.
Sorry.
No, I'm glad you... Glad you reminded me. Thank you. Double passes three, zero, one with Mr. Moore abstaining. Item 22.
Thanks, Roger.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate all the city staff's help in this, digging out some of the things into the past. A lot of things weigh in the past, and they've been very cooperative and very helpful with this. We appreciate it very much.
We're excited about the project. Keep it going.
We're looking forward to the red tag being removed and the grand opening roughly about Christmas time 2019.
We're excited about that. You're gonna have a Christmas party for... You're gonna have a Christmas party for us, right?
We will have a Christmas party for a lot of.
That's what we're talking about.
Thanks, Roger.
Thank you very much, folks.
You bet.
Thank you.
Item twenty-two, resolution approving amendment number three to the consulting services agreement with Smith Group J J R for this Chris Larson Park Riverfront Development Project. Mr. Salvatore?
Yes, Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. Uh, this design amendment would get us to about the thirty-five percent design, uh, level for the project, and we looked at this a little bit more holistically about, uh, what would be the next steps, so we got actually nu- numbers for future services, so we can look at, at, uh, what that percentage would be. So, uh, based on everything that's done to date, uh, all the services completed to date by Smith Group J J R, this current contract, and the services they outlined for future services, uh, which would include full build-out, fifteen months construction starting in two thousand and twenty, uh, our, there's things that could change, it could be done in phases, but we had to establish some criteria to disturb, uh, establish those future numbers, so I'm very happy with the number of, uh, ten point two percent, and been very impressed with this firm to date.
Very good, awesome.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
The mayor thanks you also.
Anyone to be heard on item twenty-two? Okay? Ready to vote? All right, you're always ready to vote. Before we go to citizen concerns, I'd like the student in the front row to please come to the podium and introduce yourself, you're on the Mayor's Youth Commission? And you sat through this whole meeting. Good credit. Do you have your name and school, yes?
Did you read?
Oh, I gotta announce that, it's four, zero on, uh, item twenty-two, four, zero is a vote to approve item twenty-two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my name-
Good advisors on both sides, go ahead.
My name's Michael Leiting, I go to Bishop Peeling.
Well, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you.
You know, we used to have, what, five or six, and then it went to about four, and now there's a sole person here today, so I'm really welcome to our meeting.
I figured you'd give it to him.
We scared them all away. Tell your friends, it really is a good time, I tell you.
Yeah, but feel welcome, hope you enjoyed what you've seen.
Thanks for coming.
Citizen concerns, anyone? Be presenting any citizen concerns? Council concerns? My parade partner?
None for me.
Yeah, right?
You didn't talk about your parade.
Morningside Day's Parade.
Well, I didn't wanna get us in trouble.
Don't go there.
I say it was a great time, Pete.
It was a great time.
What would you estimate, really, in Morningside, a couple of thousand?
Oh, easy, yes, it was a beautiful evening. Uh, the spectators were great, the, the kids had a great time, there's this crazy guy going up and down the street, you know, kinda amping up everybody.
But seriously, that's why-
But it was, it was good.
That's why I love parades, because really, the community comes out, they're all participating, there was a lot of excitement, and, uh, no one called me Bob, somebody did call me Rhonda, I don't know where they got that.
Oh, God, I don't even wanna know.
No one called me Bob, they, Rhonda had to pay him.
There were those chants of "Mayor," I heard that.
But it's, but it's, it really, it was, it was exciting, so, thank you, Pete.
It was good, participating.
Well, golly, you know, I'm sad I did make it to the Morningside Parade, but I did make it to the police, um, volunteers', uh, event, and I gotta fly one of the drones, one of the police department drones.
Are you kidding me?
I'm not kidding you, it was pretty cool, so, um, and I have pictures of it, maybe I'll send them to you.
Please.
So, yeah, so I, I did enjoy that, that, that was a lot of fun, um, made a lot of volunteers, I tell you what, the police department couldn't do without volunteers, and, um, there's a lot of them out there that put in many, many hours, um, that are free hours for us, but they're volunteer, um, helpful hours for the police department, so I gotta thank all the volunteers. They are very important for our city.
Thanks, Rhonda.
Yep.
Alex?
Okay, I just have a couple, and, um, I just wanted to talk about some of the events coming up that I think are really important, well, and I would say, these previous events, I wasn't able to make the open house, but I, I saw a lot of good press on that, um, so I was excited, the Morningside Day Parade was a lot of fun, uh, with the exception that I was taken out by a fellow council member. He will remain unnamed, but, um, I, I took some candy to the face, uh, I think I was, I said that I was racing him, and he was trying to slow me down, so.
No one to your right, correct?
I, I cannot confirm.
You don't even wanna name names, when no one's saying to your right did that.
Who had candy?
Uh-huh, uh-huh, got smoked in the face, that's okay. The next thing is tomorrow night.
You look no worse for the wear.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, makeup is doing wonders. Let's see, so tomorrow night, there's an event, I think I've talked about it before in this, in the chamber, um, but it's one hundred men who care of Siouxland, so I'm looking at the gentlemen in the room, um, or the gentlemen that are listening, I would really encourage you to participate in this, what it is, it's a quarterly meeting where we get together, we discuss various nonprofits, um, in the community, at the end, three of them are pitched, uh, and then the, the whole group gets to vote on who they believe was the most worthwhile, uh, nonprofit, and then we all write a check for one hundred dollars. There are over a hundred of us members, and so at the end of that night, that organization receives over ten thousand dollars, um, so it makes a huge impact. Country Club starts at, I believe, five thirty P M, there are free hors d'oeuvres and things like that, get to meet a lot of great people in the community, there's also a women's group, I'm uncertain when that meeting is, but I would encourage everyone to attend.
I'm on that women's group, by the way, and, um, I, I think it's probably next month that we'll be meeting, and it's the same scenario, everybody writes a check for a hundred bucks, and we usually have a wonderful turnout, and, um, I've seen it as high as, close to ten thousand dollars for, for a charity, and, and when you come to these, if you're interested in coming to the event, it's always, I believe it's in the paper also, but, um, you, you put a, a name of a charity in, uh, in a basket, and it's, it's just random drawn out, so it could be any kind of, any charity of, of your choice, um, that could end up with a nice, substantial amount of money, so, it's a great cause.
Makes a big difference.
You bet.
Um, two last things that I just wanted to say, number one, was, um, I've been participating in Citizens Academy, uh, which is an incredible opportunity, I've been having a lot of fun.
I didn't know that.
I heard stories about you doing that, Rhonda, uh, no, it was a great time, um, I've really, really enjoyed it, um, I would talk, I would talk more at length about it, but one thing I wanted to do is, on Friday night, I was actually able to be transferred into a cop car.
Awesome.
And did a ride along.
Awesome.
That was a, a pretty, yeah, it was impressive that we were able to get me into a cop car and strapped in, but hey, had a lot of fun doing it, but I also wanted to just give a shout out to, uh, Officer Brian Smith, he was very accommodating and very understanding and helpful with that whole process, he did a great job and did it with the utmost, uh, utmost professionalism, and I really appreciated him willing, his willingness to take me around the city. Sadly, we weren't on any calls, it was a quiet night, I think that was due to the fact I was on the streets, so I might be doing it more in the future, I tell you, I think I might have a future in that, um, but no, it was-
I got connections, I'll, I'll hook you right up.
It was a great experience, it was a great experience, exactly, father, son. The last thing that I would say, that, um, I am really excited about, I'll actually be out of town, so I'm really bummed out about this, but coming up on the first, uh, we have our first Food Truck Fridays, and if you are new to town or have not been to Food Truck Fridays, you definitely need to check this out, it's over the lunch hour, it's at Pearl Street Park this year, so there's a lot of outdoor space for you to grab a lunch and sit, there's a number of food trucks, usually there's five, five or six, I don't know, Kalen, what's signed up, do you know anyone that's signed on?
There's like eight to ten that are signed up this year.
So eight to ten food trucks from the area, uh, it's really something incredible that you want to take in, so, uh, if you have never been, I would encourage you to get your lunch Friday the first at Pearl Street Park, otherwise, that's all I have.
Thanks, Alex. I attended the, uh, last week was Youth Week, and I attended the Elks number one twelve, uh, Saturday morning, they had, uh, awards that they were giving to youth, and it was an outstanding program, and I'm glad to see groups like the Elks, uh, support our youth, and it was, it was really a good program. And then Saturday afternoon, I took my grandson to the open house at the Sioux City Police Department, and that, that was really fascinating, I mean, that's a brilliant, I, that was their first open house they've, they've had for the community, and there was a great turnout, there really was, but what was really fun, you know how I like to try things, like tubing and line biking and?
Oh, what'd you do?
Just, I, I put on the, uh, the canines, the officer did the-
Put on the sleeves?